Meeting for September the 26th to order and as always we start out with a bunch of allegiance. Councilman Thompson, would you know this please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we're a little short on council members tonight. We do have a quorum. This is exactly the number we have to have to conduct the meeting. So Harry, you're lucky. You don't have to come back. Did you all have a chance to read the minutes from the August 22nd meeting? Do I have any additions or corrections? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Move.
Moved by Brian and seconded by Karen. Those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Four to nothing. Thank you very much. Board of Public Works and Safety met on August 17th and 31st and those minutes are included in your packet for information purposes. New business and Harry, we're going to put you up first for the Downtown Partnership benches and racks.
Okay, great. Go ahead and trick or treating.
Would you introduce yourself for the record please?
My name's Harry Webb and I'm here representing Rochester Downtown Partnership. I'm the chairman of the Design Committee. And really here today to just kind of talk to you about the bench and bike rack project that we've been kind of working on for most of the year. Just kind of given a little bit of back history of RDP and the processes we've gone through over the last probably 15 years. You know, several times a city has paid for consultants to write up, do studies to talk about how to improve our downtown. And there's been three of them done since I've been in the community. And those have been great tools used to help apply for home run projects to do downtown renovations of one type or another, applying for different grants. To this point, we've been unsuccessful in hitting that home run. We've got close several times. But about three years ago, the one of the lacking things was that we needed to form the formation of a main certifiable, full-fledged Main Street organization. And so that is where Rochester Downtown Partnership was born. And it is a four-tiered organization. You guys get reports on monthly meetings. But the Design Committee is basically the committee that works on the look and feel. And as we've, as we grow as an organization, as we try to get revenue, we have now formed, you know, we are now a 501(c)(3). We're moving forward. We have a very active board. But we decided it was important to maybe take on some of these little projects that were part of the overall big picture and do some things that we can do. So when we do apply for the large projects, the city can demonstrate that it's not just creating a plan, but it's trying to execute it as much as possible. So the downtown amenities are part of that. And one of the things is the bike racks and the benches. We had, three years ago actually, when Diane Spore was chairman of the Chamber in the RDP, she won a bike rack by attending a meeting. She went, Rose Designs is a company that can do them. And that replica there, so we went through the process of designing what we wanted. And so this was a 3D that is made of cast aluminum. And it has the logo that's part of the sign that's now down on the east end of town. That incorporates the courthouse and some of the downtown look. It's kind of hard to put it in stamped metal, but it still gives it a unique thing. And of course, this is a rack that can be mounted and a bicycle can be put on either side of it. Or multiple bicycles. So it does have the function of being a bike rack, but it's also an ornamental piece. Very expensive. The company that does that is quoted over $500 to make them. And so we took that bike or bike rack to Craig Welding and said, can you do this? And they can. And they can do it relatively inexpensive. They've given us a quote of $130 per rack. And then we're going to use modern materials to powder coat it. That's around $50 to powder coat them. And then we've got fasten all to give us a really good price on all the fasteners we need to mount it into the concrete. So they're giving us that basically at their cost. So we're roughly at $200 a bike rack versus 500 some is what the price was.
You know what would really be neat? If Chris and folks out making our bike racks could make them similar or in at least a similar design as the fence around Centennial Park. So that it kind of matched the color and everything.
Oh yeah, I think they are going to be black.
Okay.
Yeah, this one was bronze, but we've decided on a black. I think it's easier to match black too. You know, I think if you sit there and think about future lampposts, benches, the fence. It's a lot easier to match black than that. So yeah, we're going to do them in a black powder coat.
Great.
So we were about ready to launch that and they said, well, you know, probably we ought to do benches at the same time. So we did, went back to the table and went through the plans and figured out which bench we liked. And we kind of settled on this style bench. It's, we approached three or four different vendors and got quotes of different benches. But this particular bench is actually made in Silver Lake. At a company and the same company made all the benches that's currently on the Nickel Plate Trail. It's Wall Bash Valley, I believe, is the name of them. And those are expensive. This is actually, it's made to look like wood, but this is actually metal. The bench is metal with a coating on there to make it look like wood. So it should be durable. And I don't know if you've really paid attention to the benches we currently have in our downtown, but they're disgraceful. I mean, they are just old. I mean, I don't know how old they are. They're probably, my time, I moved here in 84 and was on the Board of Works. I know we never replaced benches. And so I know they're at least 20, 25 years old and there's only a few. And their boards are worked on them and they definitely are not very presentable. So the goal was to then think about where would we want to put them. And looking in other communities, how they do it, they usually, you know, we are trying to make the community more bike friendly. We are bringing the Nickel Plate Trail into downtown. There is going to be more bike traffic. So the thought was that we should probably put a bike and a bench combination a lot of times, especially at the restaurants. Where people can, where people are gathering outside before they go in and things like that. Or maybe they ride their bike in to go to a restaurant. So with that in mind, we took some of the current locations where bike racks and benches were. And we just kind of mapped out the town and figured out how many would be, I guess, ideal or dream project for how many we would need. And the number actually came in a much higher than we initially thought. The number is like 17, 17 benches and 22 bike racks. And the potential of maybe additional four, because at this point we have not put any at the theater. And that didn't have one for Uncorked, because Uncorked didn't exist when we were doing it. So we definitely want every restaurant to have a bench and a bike rack. The Courthouse Square would have five of them. And the courthouse commissioners have already approved that. And Josh Driver was going to present it to the council. I haven't heard the final on that, but it seemed very favorable that they were going to allocate us the money to do the bike racks and the benches around the Courthouse Square. There would be...
That may have changed.
It might, but I'm hoping that they have money in their maintenance fund from the courthouse that they can use for that. And they think they can just escrow it off. If we don't get to it this year, we'll be able to at least allocate it for next year from this year's fund. So, and we've also presented this briefly to the Community Foundation and they could also be a source of funds. But all that being said, I'd like to see what the, you know, if the city would be willing to fund some of that and pull it out of some magic hat from this year. If there's any fund that's available, either the council's fund or wherever. If there's something that's not been fully spent, it'd be nice that we could at least escrow the money and allocate it for updating our bike racks and benches. There is a, just a brief little self spreadsheet that I included. It basically breaks down the cost. We're still working on getting that bench price down. But it's, right now they currently stand at $1,122 a bench. These will be fastened to the concrete. And they're going to be doing that with some local service clubs to do that. So it shouldn't cost us any labor to install these things.
Is it $1,000 a bench?
A thousand dollars a bench. And we've quoted, and that falls in line with some other vendors. The nice thing about Silver Lake is we can go get them. We can save well over $1,000 in shipping costs by just, you know, going and getting them ourselves. You can go wood and save money. You know, the wooden benches start probably anywhere from $600 to $700. You also have composite material that's made out of recycled materials and stuff. But I don't think it really gives us the look we want for, you know, more of a historic area. I didn't really want to go with anything too modernistic. We wanted to kind of have something that looked more traditional. And so that's kind of why we decided on the particular bench we've gone with. Good question. I did print out everything we received from the vendor, including all kinds of possible color options. You should have about an eight-page handout there. We are going to try to position them with the bike rack so they don't become rails for skateboards. We don't want them to be hopped up on and scratched up. I think a combination of positioning them near a tree with a bike rack will greatly diminish that.
Sean, I know we have talked about this a little bit before, but do we have available funds in any of our funds yet this year?
I think, I think I would have to pull from a couple of different sources, but what would, Harry, what was the final total and what's left?
Well, if we don't go to the foundation, it's around $17,000, $17,064 with the current number. I think we're going to still get that bench number down some. But, and we don't have to do 17, but you know, it's, I think if there's some economy of scale in buying them, you know, might save a little bit by getting them, but we don't necessarily have to put all 17 up. And I'd be happy to go through the details of what we came up with, but...
The short answer, I think, and the foundation was going to, what percentage was that? They were going to, it was a...
The Community Foundation?
Yes.
Well, we haven't presented anything to them yet. We've talked about it in just general terms. They said, bring us a project and we'll apply for it. So, you know...
If we were to apply and be awarded that, what would that look like?
You know, I think you could probably get $7,000 to $10,000 from the Community Foundation.
So maximum the city would be looking at would be 17, maybe less.
17 if we don't go to the foundation.
Right. So that would be the maximum. So to answer your question, I think I would be, I would say I might have to pull from a different, a couple of different sources, but I think we could probably do it. Because I believe the council budget will have some remaining that we hadn't spent, but I will need to definitely look at the numbers for sure. But I believe we can do it.
And about six grand would come from the county?
Yeah, $6,610 is their portion.
Is that of the 17?
No.
That was, that'll be about...
I don't think I gave you a copy of this, but you...
There's the...
I think I have it somewhere in our piece of...
But there's the total. Here's the city. Here's the county. If we go with everything from the city, if we get some in, whatever.
$5,000, $10,000, $17,000 are all acceptable numbers.
And kind of depending too on when you guys order these versus when we're going to be doing payment for them. Because one of the things like you alluded to, we could actually do, if we get invoiced in December, then I could also take and encumber some of that funding from this year and apply it to 2018. And then the final product would be done and we would pay for it out of the final budget of 18. So that's another, which would cushion a little bit to the end of this year. Because I don't, I would venture to say that would they have the 17, have all the benches done and bike racks done before the end of this year?
I doubt it. We could certainly get them invoiced.
Yeah, if we can get a purchase order and invoice in December, then I could pay it out. Then I could encumber money from this year and put it towards and then pay it out in January, February for the final invoice.
They're usually willing to supply invoices. We should be able to get an invoice.
And it would pass through the RDP. You know, we can, the RDP could possibly invoice the city and then use that for those funds for, you know, if it's not the exact amount, we can get close and then...
Especially since you're still negotiating on those costs for the...
I mean, well, it's definitely a separate topic, but you know, what we'd like to do maybe moving forward into the 2018 year, instead of coming to the city for every little project we want to do, we would like to get the city's commitment to RDP in some form of a annual support or dues or whatever, similar to what they do currently with the dog shelter, the community society and the...
Council on Aging.
Council on Aging. They get a blanket amount in the budget every year. You know, it'd be something that I would like this council to think about. And then we can, and we're also going to be starting soliciting dues from obviously a lot of businesses throughout the community. They're going to be very supportive hopefully. And we'd like to get to the point where we can just fund projects from that money and not have to say, okay, it's time to, you know, if we want to buy another bench, we don't have to come back to you and buy it, you know, and present it. We can just allocate it from our own funds. So, and then be reporting, give you a, you know, a report back to the council based on what we are spending the money on. So with lack of not knowing the dollar amount, is there any point?
That was what I needed. I just needed the final, the $17,064. And Mike said, I'll have to crunch the numbers again and just double check it. But from looking at them from last month to this month, I would think we would be able to come up with that. I just might have to, like I said, pull from a couple of different areas. Yeah, I do have, no, wait, not. Short answer is yes.
Council, thoughts?
My thoughts is something that's like Mr. Webb was saying, that nothing has been done for 15 or 20 years. So the, there's an obligation from the city to replace what's there and upgrade and, you know, get things more inviting for people who are coming downtown. I would be in favor of all or some, whatever we're looking at. If we get matching from the foundation or something from the foundation as well, then that would certainly help.
I would assume they'd have some kind of warranty as well. And I think the metal benches would definitely be a better way to go than the wood ones. So I'm in favor of it as well.
As far as long-term maintenance, hopefully I think it would be, you know, if you look, the ones we have downtown now have never been stained or painted. It might look better if they were, but now they're too far gone to even worry about it.
How many do we have downtown? Do you have any idea?
Oh, there's probably six or eight.
I didn't think there were a whole lot.
You know, there's a couple by Bailey's. There's a couple around the courthouse now. There's...
I think we lost some by attrition over the years that just got too bad to keep pitched.
I think probably the last thing that the town, the city has bought for the downtown was probably the flower planters and the trash cans. You know, they provided those, which that's next on the list, but that's another day.
Which is why you need the fund to do the other...
Is there a value or a dollar amount that you guys are thinking about putting in the budget or wanting in the budget?
Give till it hurts is what I would say.
Well, it's like a lot of things, whatever you put in there, it will spend.
Yeah, it's, yeah, well, whatever the city is willing to commit to the downtown is the number we're really looking for. And I know that's going to be a point of discussion, as it should be. But it would be nice to have, we, there's a lot that can be done with that money. There's already a lot of positive momentum. So we're going to continue.
Oh, one place is Webb's Drug Store.
Doesn't look like positive right now.
Well, but I'll pat you on the back, Harry. That is not a cheap project.
No, it's a lot of money.
You're investing in your community. Appreciate that.
It's exciting. Every time I drive by, there's something different that's...
A bigger hole.
Bigger hole.
Bigger hole in the wall. Yeah.
It's kind of neat to see what's underneath all that.
We are actually meeting with OCR representative on Tuesday to discuss. There is a facade renovation grant through OCR that would be a major project fund where we could get up to a half a million dollars for 10 to 15 projects. And only two communities were awarded last time. Only three applied. So they say we are high on the list for a potential grant for that. So if we can put together 10 to 15...
That's nice. How do they advertise that to everybody, huh?
But my architect is the one who works with one of the communities that got it this last year and she's coming with this OCR guy. So that, well, we're going to find out the details. It's going to take a lot of work to apply, because you have to kind of develop 10 to 15 projects. But you know, the theater is screaming for it. You know, we might be able to take care of the marquee and the facade of the theater and maybe take on several other key buildings. That's 80% funded. So the building owner's only a 20% match. So that could fund a lot.
So would you be looking for something similar? Say if the city saw fit to encumber approximately $17,000 for this year's investment into this for the bike racks and the benches, then if we would then make a commitment for, on a yearly basis, you would then want approximately that same amount of money possible? I know you said...
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be a very, a very similar number. Somewhere, yeah, a $10,000 to $20,000 commitment from the city. And we could do a lot with that. Because if we aren't going to just be relying on city funds, this is going to be, we're going, we are in the process of working on a new structure as well to get, you know, businesses in the downtown and in the community to help us on a annual basis. So, you know, Mrs. Ari Smith can expect a letter soon.
Assuming we were to make that commitment, then would they then have their own line item each year budgetarily for that? Or would they go under something else?
Much like the area planning commission folks who have to have their budget audited. And the animal shelter, they fall under the tent then of the audit purposes. I just, my first reaction, this is the first I've seen them in such, I got a little sticker shock on a $1,000 bench. Rather than jump in, can we put a toe in the water and go with half of that many to see how they work out? Some way we can gradually move into it rather than, if 17 hit us all at one time?
Yep. Like I say, this was a wish list. It wasn't a demand. It was, if we wanted to do them everywhere, where would we put them?
I see. Okay.
So there's obviously going to be, people say, well, why didn't I get a bench? But you know, that's the process. It's trying to figure out where they, I mean, I think every restaurant needs one. Absolutely. Every restaurant needs one. And you know, the clinic has got one for, you know, people that come out of the clinic and call for the minibus. They need a place to sit. That type of thing is the mindset behind it is where are people going? You always see somebody sitting in the bench on the courthouse lawn. You know, there's, those are common.
Well, I assume you've done that study.
We actually did not put them down at the corner, because we felt if, down at the corner, I think we have penciled in two racks, but no benches because of the seating arrangements in the park and not really knowing how that was all going to look when we walked through it. But, you know... But yeah, you know...
That maybe would be a question. I'm assuming this style bench would, is fairly stable and they won't quit making it would be...
Yeah, I think it's a pretty common.
One thing that would concern me about doing...
It is a common, but, and it might make one that's smaller too. I mean, I don't really know all the details of that, but that was kind of the standard size we went with.
Was there any price breaks at all that you went?
You know, when we quoted it, we said, what's the price for 17? So... Yeah, you could probably $500, $600 if you could get one out of wood.
No sense. If you're going to do it, no sense in doing it, something that won't last.
And we could certainly trim the list back. And I'd be happy to go over that with you. You know, we can help make, help make the decision as to where we want to put them.
I have just a little bit of a concern of only doing six or seven initially.
I can read through if you want where I decided to put them. I'd say there's five around the courthouse.
And then they would stay because they're paying for theirs.
Right. I have one, there's a nice tree down by the... I have one down by the chamber office. And then on the opposite half of that block, down by Global Healers, there's a nice, it's nice to have a bench where there's a tree. You know, they can sit there in the shade a little bit. So I put one there. I put one at WRY, oh, that's a bike, bike racks at WRY on Putz. Wellness Center has got two racks. No, Wellness Center just has a rack. The Cuban Restaurant has a rack and a bench. Evergreen has a rack and a bench. Flirt already has a bench. So we're just going to put a rack. She has her own bench out there.
I think the Streamliner has one over there too.
Poblano's Rack and Bench, the Foundation Rack and Bench, Juretti's Rack. I did not put the benches at Juretti's because they have outdoor dining tables sitting there. So I thought, well, maybe just a couple of bike racks in that area. The Medical Clinic has got a rack and a bench. Bailey's has two benches now, but they may not want, there's some talk that they might do their own thing there. So before we buy the two for Bailey's, we would approach the brewery people to see what they want to do there. And then I put one in front of United Way slash Webb's. That's kind of where they're distributed.
We're maybe down to 15.
Yeah.
What about then the courts? You said that was...
There is, I didn't think it was on there, but I got it on here, so...
I will say, as far as available funds, we could pull it from our CCD fund. We've got available cash, plus I believe I've got appropriation available, because we earmarked... I can't remember if it's $50,000 or $100,000 that we put towards other projects or stormwater. And if we have some issues, large issues with stormwater, we can pull it out, but this is a project that we could take out of CCD. So there would be, I would have to jump there too immediately. But I could, like I said, I'm pretty sure the council budget has some available funds as well that I can pull from the council budget, too.
Do you have major heartburn on trying to do all of them at once, or is it...
I would hate to get 17 and find out, if we had our druthers, we would've got a different style, or done it in a different manner, and I mean, we've got, then we've got 17 grand spent. I don't know, that's just my personal opinion.
Yeah, we could get one.
Well, or, you know, set them, set them someplace, see how they...
And I'm sure we could even make a field trip to Silver Lake, go look at them, you know, they're, they make them there, so...
Silver Lake got them?
I, they make them there.
In the city?
Oh, in the city, I don't...
That's always the first thing to look for. If they don't have them, you drive right on through them.
It's not hard to do at Silver Lake.
Yeah, but, okay, maybe, maybe a field trip's in order, and some more discussion, I, I don't know, except, except for the council.
Ted, if I may, one of the things in the down, the last two studies that have been done for the downtown revitalization studies, the benches all seem to circle around this kind of style, both groups that did the first downtown study and then the second one. It seems like this has been kind of the style that they just keep coming back to. So as far as the style of it, I don't know that you're gonna find many committees that are too far away from it, because it fits that look and feel that the design committee and just the engineering firm that helped us with our downtown revitalization study kind of keeps coming back to. So as far as the style goes, I think we would be okay there. But I think a field trip to Silver Lake to look at them would be a bad idea.
The same company that made that rack makes benches, and they're actually a couple thousand dollars more than the Silver Lake company, and they, their style was in the book that, you know, we had done, but that Ashley style is identical to them. And it's even made to the same metal, so it is a...
Do you like field trips? Just go for them?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sure you can probably get away from it, it's construction zone now there.
Well, it's a good idea, we should definitely go sit in one.
If they fit us, they'll fit anybody, right, Harry?
That's right.
What do you folks think?
If you cut the, the volume of benches down, would you also be cutting down the number of racks, or would you keep it at 28?
Uh, the current racks were 21...
They were...
Or 22, plus maybe four extras, because I'm not, you know, what I'd like to do with this rack is I'd like to see this rack used throughout the community. You know, the RDP is restricted to downtown, but I think this same rack could be used at the boat landings, at the city park, you know, we could, and they're not that expensive. We're getting, and those could be made in batches, but it, you know, it would be nice to have this...
Craig's would certainly be more flexible, wouldn't they?
Yeah, I mean, they're gonna, um, there's a little bit of, but, you know, we could get additional racks made for, it just can't be part of this funding request, because... That would, but the price would be the same, you know, park department wants to buy some, it'd just be nice to have consistency. And I'd say they are gonna be black. Maybe the request could just be in a dollar amount, and then we can just continue to fine tune this thing until we get everybody on the same page with it.
You know, I've seen these things, too, with placards on them, that say donated by so-and-so, or memory of so-and-so, or...
I know, we talked about it, you know, but if a business closes, and then somebody else's name is on the bench in front of them, and...
Okay.
I don't know, I don't want it to say Eda Joe's, or, you know, I'd like it to be...
So you want a generic bench?
I do.
What's the generic price, Harry? Do better than...
It's only gonna go up, we start getting them customized, I'll tell you that.
Well, what if we did approve a, a dollar amount of two? And then...
Let them work with that, and see how that, yeah, factors in. I still wanna go take a look at one with you.
I would go over with you as well.
For the purposes of tonight, though, are we looking at separate, at a package deal, bike racks and benches? Or is everyone, are you happy enough with the bike racks, they can proceed with that, and then benches be separate? No, I'm just asking if you're, I haven't heard any reservations about the bike racks at all.
I assume if, if they're, they're awarded the money, they will be going with that money, or will they...
It'd be nice to do them together as far as installation goes, because, you know, the final layout of where it's gonna sit is gonna be a, whoever's doing them is gonna put one in, one of each in at the same time, I mean, ideally.
Are you comfortable with the 17, the numbers, with the 17,000?
I just looked, yes.
Well, then, I'll go ahead and make a, a motion to encumber the 17,000 with, and respectfully ask that the council, whoever wants to go, would have an opportunity to go over to Silver Lake, too, and take a look at, at the bench and see the bench, and with you, and then empower the committee to make their decision on benches and bike racks.
I have a motion to encumber $17,000 to be put toward the bike rack and bench project. Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, settled by Fitzwater. Those in favor signify by raising your right hand.
Thank you very much.
We can say you can go, Mike.
Thank you, Harry, very much.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, there you go. Okay, thank, thank you, Harry. Are you making your other meeting, are you?
I think I can, thank you.
You bet.
Thanks, Harry.
I'd love to follow him down the street with him.
Thank you. Change your bikes with us?
That's my bike, Harry. Okay, well, the next piece of business involves a tree board presentation of an ordinance revision for allowable tree species. That would be Helen?
It's me.
Please identify yourself for the E B and the new sentinel.
Helen Anyer, representing the tree board. Get these... Here tonight to make a request. In 2014, the ordinance of the tree board was revised to remove the large trees that were planted in the tree lawn. And we'd like to put those back. Some of those were diseased trees, needed to be removed, others were just not very good tree lawn trees. The committee was Eric Schlarf and myself, and Jim Mulligan, the arborist, and Mitch Melton of Shrove Nurseries. We all gathered, researched, did a lot of background on these trees that were presenting, they were... Rochester's always been blessed with a beautiful canopy of trees. You drive down a street in the fall, and it's like you're driving under a golden cloud, it's beautiful. And we, we'd like to see that continue. There are benefits, environmental, the shade for homeowners. Most people don't sit on the street next to the, but they're still, it's valuable to have that. They're not invasive, they're not ADA problematic. These trees do not have surface roots, aren't problematic for getting into water and sewer lines, that kind of thing. And we would like to have the list that you have been presented reinstated, along with, there's one line in the revision that was of the 2014 ordinance, and it says, "Any of the following trees may be planted as park trees, but only small trees may be planted as tree lawn trees." We'd like that to be removed.
I don't know how many of you are here, when the last ordinance was revised, Chase Reed, Brown, and Marty? Okay. Any thoughts, input?
So you would like to have seed that be removed, and those types of trees, the small trees?
I'm sorry?
You would like to have the small trees?
The, the, the small trees that are listed there, yes, there are large, medium, and small trees, all listed.
And you'd like to have them all removed?
No.
From the list?
These are the ones that I want, we, the tree board would like to present, to be the, the current list, the change, change to that.
Completely misunderstood, okay.
No, there were, in the old list, there were sugar maple, white ash, green ash, little leaf linden, basswood. Those were the large trees that were re, re, removed, and some of them were problematic, but these, and there, you'll notice that there is maple on there, but those are the maples recommended by both Jim Mulligan and Mitch Melton.
So if any of these, if any of these in future years tear up our sidewalks, we blame Jim Mulligan?
If you're around. If you're still around, you can.
Woodsman, spare that tree.
I don't know where the question would go, how, how do we ascertain that these don't have root problems that get into the sewer systems and...
The background on the, the background information on the, on the sheets that we just gave you.
Yeah, I, um, this was discussed...
In, in the book, the reference book that we used, there were, there were trees that said problematic surface roots and that kind of thing. But that, those were not on this list.
What, that, that ordinance was revised about 2010, wasn't it?
It was, the copy that I have, 27th of May, 2014.
Okay, 2014, yeah, that, okay, okay, there's the ordinance number, yeah. Again, you two remember the issue?
I'm trying to think, I don't know, do you remember all those, or, that's why you did that?
I wanna say part of it stemmed from, we had, I think, we had a bad storm come through, I think it was a combination of issues that came up. There was a storm that came through, we had a lot of damage, that we were running, we were going through our ADA transition plan, so we had, and we identified several sidewalks that had been damaged by the shallow tree roots. I think all kind of in that same, so at that time, I, I'm not sure if Mr. Smiley, at that time, had went to the tree board and said, "We wanna revise it", if it was sent from the border worms originally, because of all the tree damage that came with the extra, extra expense we had. I, I don't recall exactly what spurred that change, I just know that there was several things that kind of happened, and then I believe Mr. Smiley had gone to the tree board and said, "Look, we need to make some changes if I, am I, you might remember more than I, because I think he talked a lot more than I did, but..."
Yeah, I think, I think a combination of the storm, and, uh, there was some discussion, we had some difficulty with the tree lawn issue, but I, I can't totally get more than that.
Making us think back a few years, Ken.
Yeah, I understand, 2014.
But I said, I think that was just a combination of things, I don't think it was one particular thing that said, "This is why we..." And the other thing was, is there was a conversation about flowering trees. There was, you know, having that flowering tree down, down the main street to make it look pretty and inviting, and the smaller trees were easier to prune, but at the same time, the challenge you face is, as a tree city, there's still a fundamental responsibility for us to maintain that tree canopy. So finding that right fit of the trees that meet those challenges for the tree city designation, as well as, you know, you don't wanna walk into a concrete jungle and have no shade, you know, it's kind of thing, so... And we've actually had residents, I will say, we have had residents, once we made that change, that were disappointed, because they wanted another big tree in their front yard, because it provided shade for their house, so...
Yeah, it, it's, when you have the big trees, yeah, they're beautiful, and they're gonna take care of the shade issues and all that, and it certainly does designate a tree city distinction. Are there gonna be some negatives to them? Sure, there's negatives with all of them. We'll have a sidewalk pushed up once in a while with some of the bigger trees, we'll have a sewer issue periodically, what you get into with roots and stuff, but you're gonna have issues with any, anything, anything you have, it, uh, I don't know, council, I, if we're gonna be a tree city, I don't think we've gotta cover the, the bases, and that's certainly a designation we've been very proud of for a number of years.
Well, you have, and you have to think about, how many years was that tree there before it...
Presented a problem.
Presented a problem to the sidewalk or to sewer system. These trees that we've been careful about selecting, we don't expect, anticipate those problems. And smaller trees in a tree lawn can be at a disadvantage when you pull up to a corner and you look, because the tree, the ordinance says, eight foot. And that's not very practical when you're having a lot of small trees in the tree lawn.
It creates visibility issues, and...
Yeah.
Yes.
Foilages and...
Yes.
Especially if they're not pruned up.
Yes, and it's very difficult to prune up a small tree to an eight foot. You have an umbrella.
If it only grows 10 feet, you're cutting off up to eight, isn't it?
Exactly. Just make sure we have somebody who has, Jim, do you know anybody that can do that, or, I want to say, not words on me, what is that?
That's, that's paper.
That's paper. You know what I'm talking about?
bonsai.
Bonsai.
Bonsai, there you go.
We could have contests.
Yeah, oh my gosh, there we go.
One thing, one thing I haven't think up through all this, is that adding more trees will have, have more diversity on trees.
Yeah.
Just like, you know, 40, 50 years ago, they were saying, "Let's plant elm trees, let's plant all ash trees and have all, you know..." If you just have one or two things, and if something does come in and destroy them, so we have different trees there for different sizes, that's another thing, too, is that, I'm not sure if Ms. Anyer said, but different sized trees based on how big your tree lawn is.
Correct.
Rather than just having, you know, a crab apple in a 30-foot tree lawn, it's good, but if you can get a maple or an oak or something that's gonna fill that spot, I think that will help the area.
There's designated distances or widths of tree lawn, depending upon the size of the tree.
I'm assuming that cost-wise, they're all about the same.
Yes, because they're all bought at, at a small, at a small size.
I see.
What about the messing of the, the, or berry dropping, I mean, a lot of trees have, us, very small fruit or berry on them, or flowering tree, they can be very messy on the sidewalks where people...
In all of our, in all of our looking, we didn't find any... In all of our looking, we didn't find any tree that doesn't have something that drops from it.
Right.
It can be a nut, it can be a berry, it can be a maple tree that's whirling eggs.
I will say, the flowering trees, when they did their research back in 2014, one of the things that the Border Works had recommended, I believe it came from the Border Works, was that they find trees that were non-fruit bearing, like the crab apples, non-fruit bearing, or the hot thorns, that it was a non-thorn berry. So they did do, so the ones that we have in there should be in that species that's less, there may still be some, I'll say, waste product from the tree when it sheds. But they did do their diligence to find the ones that would be the least problematic.
The Board just massages this list pretty well, right?
Would we need an entire new resolution, or would we just amend the list of trees acceptable?
No, I think you amend the ordinance.
amend the ordinance?
Yeah. It's my understanding, the list is in the ordinance.
Correct.
Yeah, I think you're going to need to amend the ordinance.
Ellen has typed this up, and this is good. I mean, it's laid out perfectly, but we need it in a revised format to pass or vote on With the action of the council, of course, with the thoughts on it.
I'm in favor. I've sat through all the Tree Board meetings, I've seen the work.
Oh, that's right, you're on the tree.
I've seen the work they put through this. It's not one of those, "Hey, let's do this for Tuesday." It's been, well, it's been several months of work and talking. And I think Ms. Enyer was saying that they had looked at maybe 30 trees, and they said, "This would be great." And the other guy said, "No, those won't work because of these problems." So they weeded all, not say weeded the bad ones necessarily, but the ones that weren't as practical. And they narrowed it down to this list here, which would be practical for the area, the size of the space it's going into. So I guess, I would, I'm satisfied they've done a good job. I think it'll help the city. I'd be in favor of amending the ordinance to reflect that work.
I would, too. Well, I would, okay, I would entertain a motion amendment. We have this as presented drawn up in Troy.
You don't need a motion.
I don't need it. We'll just have you revise it and we'll act on it if necessary.
Yeah, that's the end. I can have it.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thank you very much, Jim.
Well, I'd like to say something else before you leave. You know, I've always got something to say. I want to compliment our Tree Board. I've been to a few of the meetings, and Eric, Ellen, Ray, Dossman, and certainly Jim Mulligan, who's been a huge asset as our arborist consultant. You folks came in and you took a system that was a little chaotic and revised the reporting process of people who wanted some activity regarding trees in their tree lawn. It seems to be working very well.
Yeah, yes. The process we have now is definitely working much better. We've got a complete paper trail, full circle all the way around. Don't forget, this is Ravencroft as well.
I'm sorry, Ruth Ann Ravencroft, yeah, covered it all. Thank you. It's working well. You folks, I know, put your hearts into that. It's an unpaid board. It's certainly your time that we appreciate, and also your talents. You have a lot of knowledge in this area. And thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks, Ellen.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I jumped over Halloween, didn't I? We missed Halloween. Well, you wrote Harry in.
I missed it all that way, I'm sorry.
Who's here for Halloween trick-or-treat hours?
Nobody, that's just...
Nobody's here?
No, that's a council discussion.
Denied.
Although Sarah might want to speak up.
There's a guy from the New Sentinel in costume. No. You gonna be a rap for Halloween, Wes?
No. He's going to dress up as a reporter.
Okay, what are we looking at for Halloween hours?
Well, typically, they're October 31st retreats.
Is that when they happen?
We've had the discussion of changing it to a different date, but nobody wanted to do that.
Uh...
In the past...
Is this last year?
Yeah, and what in the past, what history has been is, they do the downtown Boo Fest typically from 4:30 to 5:30 for the downtown folks, the merchants that want to participate. And then, in the last couple of years, the Rochester Downtown Partnership has taken over that role of Boo Fest and coordinated costume contest or things of that nature. I'm not sure what's in store this year. We've had some changing of the guard in the Promotions Committee, so we'll have to see if Sarah's got any updates on that when she speaks. But the 4:30 to 5:30 is downtown, and then typically regular trick-or-treat hours start 5:30 to 7:30 is typically what has been done in the past. And there's no rain date. It's rain, shine, snow.
We said it all.
Because I was, two years ago, it was snowing.
Can't be anything.
It was snowing. It was snowing. And then basically, we just need the council to vote, so that way we can get the information to the Chamber of Commerce and to the Downtown Partnership. And we start getting phone calls from the news channels in South Bend as well, wanting to get our trick-or-treat hours posted. So trying to get ahead of the game so we can get the media notified of when our trick-or-treat hours will be.
It seems to have worked pretty well in the past. Somebody downtown that participates in Boo Fest, we get a lot of kids downtown, and then they do go have plenty of time to trick-or-treat. So I'll make a motion to set trick-or-treat hours on October 31st with Boo Fest from 4:30 to 5:30, and trick-or-treat hours from 5:30 to 7:30 with no rain out time scheduled.
Okay, I've got a motion on the table. Do I have a second for that? Seconded by Karen, that was in favor, signed by by a 4-0 on the trick-or-treat hours or Halloween hours. Okay, thank you. Randy Williams, Fourth Street Grant Award update.
Good evening.
Good evening, Randy.
We received $670,000 from the Community Crossing Grant for the Fourth Street project. We'd put in for $995,324. The total project cost was $1,327.99. The $995,000 was N.DOT 75%, because it's a, we'd pay 25%, they'd pay 75. So basically, we're going to go back to our engineering firm and go back over the project cost, see what we can do. But we're thinking we can probably do about 90% of it. And then we will apply for the other 10%, and whatever we need to finish the project for the grant for next year.
Yeah, of course, we're talking about the upgrade to Fourth Street. We discussed it at different times, widening and redoing the roads out to the industrial park and all the way to 25, eventually from the railroad tracks up in front of the Prairie Mill area there all the way out. And that would also include drainage, some drainage, work done, as well as sidewalk work done on the sidewalk, sidewalks then on the south side of the project going all the way out.
Is there some lighting in there as well?
There is not.
Okay.
This is, the Community Crossroads Grant that Randy mentions is the grant, if you remember, last year, the county was successful in getting a million dollars. And it's strictly for road projects, such as what we just talked about. And they were able to utilize a couple of their major projects, completion of those. We have to use the money within a certain time period. But N.DOT started that grant process last year, and we have every thought and hope that it's going to continue. It's what everybody informs us. So we'll be able to apply again next year, and we can actually use that as a wraparound for this project if we need to, as well as bring in other major street roadwork projects. The county got a million last year. They got $515,000 this year. There were about, as I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, Randy, but there were about 3,000 more requests for grants in our particular category than they had last year. So there's, people are getting more in tune to this N.DOT money, that it's out there and available. And so folks that were successful last year, most of them that I've seen, didn't get as much as they did the year before. You know how that is. They kind of, in more activity, they kind of cut down on how they spread it around. And even though it was our first, we weren't granted all the money we asked for, but a major, major part, large portion of it, was $670,000. So Randy did a tremendous job on putting the reports together that would necessarily apply for this grant. And I want to thank you in asking to give you all kind of an update that this project will be moving forward.
Okay. Do you want me to go ahead and do the rest while I'm here?
Boy, you are getting pushy.
Trying to get you $670,000.
Yeah, he can be pushy. Yes, that's true. That's true. He's basing in that, isn't he? Sure, go ahead and give the rest of your department report.
Okay, we, our lab did our normal plant testing, our plant, we mowed Plant Lions Club into depot. We also cleaned second stage clarifiers, one and two. We transferred sludge from the primary secondary digestors, and we filled some drying beds. Also, ARVAC was having a seminar for the Northern Indiana Operators Association, and so they came over and we gave them a tour of the wastewater plant. Collections, we pulled the pump at the Victoria Park lift station, cleaned it. We mowed the lift stations. We took our Aquatec to brown equipment because it was due for a service on the VAC unit. Seventh Street, we've got the structure on the east side of the tracks is in place. They've got the new 30-inch casing installed underneath the railroad. And right now, we're waiting on spacers because they have to, once they get the casing in, then they take grade shots off of it, and then make the spacers to fit it so they get the proper grade for the pipe coming underneath. They was expecting them in this week, but I haven't heard anything about them yet. The stormwater, we don't have any update on that. And as far as the wastewater plant, Clean Co.'s moved equipment in, and they're started working on the phosphorus removal and subinate pump station. Tomorrow, they're supposed to start digging the footers for our phosphorus building.
Just to remind you, all the phosphorus project has gone, you know, it started, the due diligence in regards to that area started back in the last administration to get our plant up to the newest requirements that we have to meet on phosphorus levels. We are moving ahead now with that project, the engineering firm, contractors and everything have been lined up, and we're moving forward on that. Again, Randy is falling under his tent. The Seventh Street project, you want to explain a little bit, remind everybody what that was?
We're putting a new sewer line under the railroad. The one that was there was in iron, and it was scaled so bad that when we tried to clean it, or we went to camera, you couldn't get the truck through. So we were putting a new sewer line under, and part of it is, well, it takes care of the, around the lake and the east side of town. It's a 12-inch line that runs half-full pretty much all the time. So we're putting in a 15 just for cases of expansion on that side of town. The first time they pushed a 24-inch casing under, it was to the point that it was so far off grade, it wouldn't make anything work, so we made them put in a new one. They went four feet south, and they shoved a 30 underneath of it. And then, like I said, as soon as they get that done, then they'll put the 15-inch line in. They'll put in all the piping, they'll have to cover it, and then it has to sit for 30 days, and then they do a mandrel test on it to make sure when they backfill and compress the aggregate that they didn't collapse the pipe. As soon as that gets done, then they'll start bypass pumping and hook up the new, they'll abandon the old, fill the old sewer with flowable ground, and then it will be done.
Yeah, it's, doesn't sound like much, but it's a pretty major project. And if that whole line had gone to pot, we would have been in big trouble, wouldn't we?
Yes.
Again, I'd like to compliment you, Randy. Randy had the foresight to have one of his people on site every day that these crews were working out there. I'm not sure we'd have discovered some of the faux pas that were happening if he hadn't had somebody on site there and did a good job of holding their feet to the fire. Going back to drawing board studying all over again, it didn't cost us a nickel other than time, because it was the vendor's issue. So again, thank you very much. Jampers, papers, the grant, and that, you just earned your pay this week. Thank you much. Anybody have questions for Randy? Thank you very much, Randy. Okay, before going on with the rest of the department head reports, I just, I wanted to open up a subject for discussion. I wish I had the whole council here, but I'm starting to chew on this, folks. The ceded revenues and distributions, that's the county economic development tax, and I know we've had these discussions a couple different times. That is a, it's a county income tax that is taken out of all of our paychecks to fund, basically was initially started to fund economic development, and is also how the Fedco organization was initially funded and established. And back in 1991, the county came forward and asked that the City of Rochester, the City of Moulton, the City of Kewanna, the City of the Hacksaw, turn over the control of our specific piece of that income, so that one distribution, one party handling that, could work with the economic development group, put the economic development emphasis together. So about $900,000 is collected every year. Of that, 250, 300, right around there would...
It fluctuates.
It fluctuates.
It would probably be closer, but it does fluctuate based on income.
250, if you will, would come our way normally if we hadn't done that. But, you know, that would have made us responsible for portions of the economic development expenses. I just throw it out for consideration and discussion that that 1991 agreement, we need to dust it off, in my opinion, and rethink it, especially when it's announced that the county has a revenue shortfall, and they're thinking of using those funds to boost up some of their general fund issues. And that came into play, what, five, six years ago, with the property tax caps, and everybody was squealing about the revenue shortfall, and the property tax caps were throwing at everyone. So the state came through and allowed counties, municipalities, whomever, take some of those ceded funds and use them to shore up their areas. ceded funds and use them to shore up their areas. And the county has, has done that, and that's, that's fine. They had every right to do that, but the city of Rochester, the city of Fulton, the city of Kiwanah, we could have done the same thing. I just think it's time we take a hard look at that and if not, get our whole jump back every year, at least a portion of it, so we've got some economic development funds to utilize within the city. I wanted to throw that out for general comment, suggestions, your thoughts. Chase, you look like you want to say something.
I do have a question, I guess, on, do you know for sure who is responsible for paying the, the bond payment for the Blackwater property?
Yeah, we did, that, that's another, that was in paper just today. So there's, the county is going forth and they're refinancing that, that bond commitment because of some interest improvements that can be taken advantage of. That was a, a $1.5 million bond. And yeah, it, it was used to, within the sewer project going out of Forest Street. That was, that bond is listed under the county and the County Redevelopment Corporation. We have asked numerous times for some type of documentation, asking what our commitment was to that. Nobody's been able to answer that for us. And yeah, in discussing this issue, it has been mentioned by the different folks at the county level that hey, a portion of these monies are going through the bond payment for Forest Street. What is our commitment there? I mean, I wasn't involved with that. Surely that's, if there's something that's in writing, but we're not on the bond. So it's, it's a good question, Chase, very good question.
What's the, if you know, what's the general thought for the other communities that are involved? You've mentioned Akron, Kiwanah, are they, are they, my understanding that this was an all or none package, that either everybody's in or, or if one wants to get out, then the whole...
Oh, I don't, I don't know about that. I don't know. I've not been part of any of those types of discussions. I thought you were saying an all in one package in 1991.
I actually, that, that was, I sent you a packet and part of the council, and I included the council minutes that stated that.
Yeah.
Essentially, it was an all or none deal. So the understanding with the other, at least my conversations with the other co-treasurers is, is that if one of us breaks it, it's broken for everybody. Because the result, the way the resolution was written, I mean, obviously, we're not attorneys and we would have to turn our attorney to review that, but we, we have had conversations about it, myself and the other co-treasurers, some other council members have, it's been brought to their attention. So the conversation has been there about this because obviously, they've had projects, you know, Akron is, they've had the, the biggest one that y'all probably are familiar with is the Opera House. Kiwanah had one of their buildings that FedCo had purchased and renovated and ultimately sold. So they, each, each one of our communities has had some kind of a project or something come across their desk that their hands were tied because they didn't have the fund, their ceded funds that they were entitled to, that they could have just made the decision whether to do it or not do it without having to go to the county and say we like our allocation. So I know the conversations have happened. Whether they brought them up in their formal meetings, I don't know.
Well, and, and I know too that you can argue all day long that the certain offices at the county are taking care of all of us, but my retort to that is, well, wouldn't they be doing that if we didn't have ceded? We'd never gone that route. They're under the tent of the county. Back in 2010, I think, again, just maybe, oh, it was longer than that ago, Casey's office, the area planning...
I'll have to look at you. I, I don't remember if it was 2008 or 2010.
Yeah, I know one of the things that was mentioned when we eliminated our, you know, inspectors and our, our part of the permit process here at the city, it was touted that, you know, we were going to save X amount of dollars by doing it. Well, we're still paying for it. I mean, that, that's where ceded funds are being utilized. And, and that's fine. I have no problem. I'm not saying we should pull the whole thing out, but it would be nice to, when we're looking for some ceded funds, we don't go in and have to scrape and scramble to get a, get a ceded fund. Kind of like what Eric was asking for, that we ought to have our, our own, a portion of our own ceded funds available to us. That's, that's my take on it unless you folks have some other justification. I would ask to chew on it a little bit, bring it back to the next meeting, tell me what you think, if you want to think about that. It's a big, big jump, I know that.
I was going to say, I was going to say, and I, I did email you guys everything that I had paperwork-wise from 2004. With the exception of, which everything's available, by the way, on the DLGF website, so it's public record. The only thing that was in, that I had emailed was the 2004, 5, 6, and 7 was a document that I found in my records from the previous, from, I believe it was from Carlos Arment, had typed up. So I'm not sure where that data came from because it's not on the DLGF website because they, they go back to 2008. So, but everything else, and you can see each one of the municipalities' allocation plus the counties for each one of those years. So you can see the actual dollar figures, ceded funds, that we, we would have received and then each one of the municipalities would have received. I tried to give you as much information to review.
I didn't see any information and I appreciate what you sent. Is, is there a process for breaking or pulling out of something like this?
I don't have any idea. There was a, we would have, I believe we have a resolution of our own. I thought I included it, but maybe not.
But I didn't, I didn't see any language about the process. If this were to end, how it would happen?
At a minimum, I think it'd be a, be a new resolution from the council of some sort, but there may be some statutory requirements as well.
Well, again, I, you know, when, when, when the county starts talking about 800 and some thousand dollars of ceded funds to support their shortfalls and, you know, we're contributing there to the 250,000 or more, you don't, you don't mind supporting some of these programs, but as far as the total commitment, let's take a look at the whole picture. And I did, you, you started to ask, because I had the conversation with anyone and I have talked with the council president, you have a witness. And he says, you know, that's, that's not an absolute, that's some area we are going to be looking at though. As soon as they get their information back from the state, they're probably going to be looking at, looking at their budget real heavily for what they need to do. So, but it just, it's been 1991 that we just turned those funds over. I just think it's time to think about it a little bit.
And, you know, one of the things that Ted and I've chatted about with this is, we have to keep in, in mind, and he already mentioned it, that these funds help to fund FedCo, they also help to fund the area planning commission office. So in, in reorganizing this, and through the course of this, the other thing that has happened is state statute has changed and now they no longer, they have repealed the Indiana code that established ceded, which was IC 6-3-5-7 and replaced it with IC Code 6-3-6, which is the new local income tax, which is lit. So they have, the state itself has changed some of their structure when it comes to the economic development income taxes. They've also, it also includes our LOED, which is our public safety LOED. It includes a lot, anything that deals with the income tax, they have changed the structure on how that is done. So I think through the course of that and our due diligence to make sure that whatever this revision might look like, that we keep in mind all of the, as Ted said, the outlined factors of, because we don't, we don't want to cause a shortfall of, in a department or a area of the city that we need to support. So again, this is up for discussion, just bringing it to light for you guys to chew on it a little bit. If you need any further information from my office, just let me know and I will see what I can find in my research. I've, I've got a lot of other documents on, see, I have an entire folder, as you can see on CNN, I've done a lot of homework, but some of it wasn't really pertinent for this evening. If you want further information, let me know.
Do they spend it all every year?
That I'm not certain. We would have to ask Christina Schreiber.
What is, Mr. Thompson asked earlier, what is the, if you know, what is the total bond payment that has been going out the past several years?
It fluctuates with their interest, but it, total bond payment is right around 200,000 a year.
Okay.
Because they make two installments.
Do we know what portion they, are they saying it's cities and what portion is the counties?
No. According to the DL, this is all on the DLGF website, their bond is totally listed as county.
Well, I understand how it's listed, but...
No, they, no, we have no documentation.
What breakdown is?
Right, yeah, if, because the mayor said it was, part of it is that they were applying some of our ceded money towards that or all of it?
That, that I wouldn't, if we, right now, it's verbal that they have stated that they utilize part of our ceded portion to pay towards this bond. And it's all verbal.
Okay.
As of right now, we don't have anything in writing to what that agreement was.
There, there was that one breakdown where it showed the, the county and Rochester, Rochester City and everything else, all of it was coming from the state, that's why I didn't know about the, the bond payment too.
No, that didn't include, no.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the information from the DLGF on the revenues received is just our, is the revenue allocation.
Okay, okay.
I would, this is purely my speculation, but I would think if you returned to 1991 and threw in the factor of what we have today, that you can use these funds to prop up your general fund if you have a shortfall, I doubt that that vote would have gone the way it went. That's just my speculation. Anyway, throw that out to chew on and we'll have some more discussion about it.
And what, what, last question.
Sure.
When was the last time that the city had gotten any ceded money or requested ceded money through the county?
Well, as far as actually receiving our own direct without, in 1991.
Or asking for?
As far as actually us going to ask them, to my knowledge, I don't know that I've had a mayor or a council member that I, that has gone and specifically asked for ceded funds. I know Terry Lee has gone for different projects, but I don't know, I couldn't tell you how much or what specific projects he would have gone under the FedCo umbrella to request ceded funds.
Okay.
I, I honestly, I could tell, we'd have to ask Terry what he's done and then previous FedCo directors prior to him. There should be some documentation of that within the FedCo minutes and/or the county minutes, but we wouldn't necessarily have it here unless it started at the council level and that would require a lot of reading and research to find out.
But, but as far as you know, has the, the city itself made any requests for that?
Since I have been in office, I, the only one that I can recall off the top of my head was when there was a developer that was looking at purchasing the, the old Harshakor Harps factory and there was conversation about asbestos removal. And that was the only one I could think of. But again, I, there may have been requests that went directly from the administration to Terry, to the, to the council that would not have, came across my document in minutes.
Okay.
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 Department head reports. Chief Butler?
No.
My department heads are dwindling.
Wait, I have a question.
You know something, can we, can we skip down to the alley vacation? No, so that was 7th and 12th.
They untrust you with password?
No, my screen locked up on me. I don't know what happened. I tried...
Silence it.
The public hearing for the alley vacation, I, I made a mistake on the agenda and the ordinance for the alley vacation for Pickens, Mrs. Pickens, was supposed to have been a public hearing and I, again, I think I deleted it when I deleted Harry off of the agenda when I, because I'd added a few things and I removed it. So I can apologize.
You're a good company.
Can we get them up and let them go to do their presentation so they don't have to stay?
I don't think Chief Butler would have...
Apparently not.
I figured you were going to allow them to go. I'll be here till the end of the meeting.
No, that'd be fine.
I apologize. Thank you.
Do we need to wait?
That's all right. Do we need to wait? Okay. I'll tell you, just, just hang tight with us a second. We got one council member in.
No problem. Okay. How you been? I've been good.
Good, good, good. You know, last time I saw you, you didn't have a leg break.
I probably didn't have part of this either.
You know, I didn't so either.
While he's, while you're reviewing, in your packets, there was actually an alley vacation, it's under the, I put everything together in one little area there, the notice of the public hearing, and there should have been some maps on there as well.
Yes.
That show the area. Fortunately for Mr. Pickens, the area, he owns on either side of it, so the adjoining neighbors were pretty sparse.
Yeah.
At that point. So I will let him kind of explain and then you have all the rest.
I'll wait until...
While we're waiting for him, where is Perry Street? What is it now?
Perry Street?
Yes, on the old, old map, it's Madison Perry.
That's probably 14th Street or Monroe. When that thing was, the alley was plotted out, 14th Street was another name, Monroe was another name, this was 100 years ago or whatever.
Oh, yeah, I know, it was 1869, I think it said.
Yeah.
I was curious. So the downtown street being 14th?
I think it was 14th.
That's true.
I think so.
Okay. I'm just curious.
Yeah, yeah. I can show you on, put my finger on it.
Cause then that's more particular to...
Yeah, ran north and south.
Well, this is a cross street from Madison, whatever, the cross street, so 14th then or 13th maybe?
Yeah.
Monroe.
Monroe's, Madison, and then to Monroe, 14th Street.
Okay.
Runs...
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're back in session here.
We're official now.
No, that's fine. Frank, would you, would you identify yourself for the...
Yes, I'm Frank Pickens and we're here about my mother in Iona. She lives there and when she bought the place, there was a lot there that we bought and been thinking about moving home and building a small residence there. Anyway, went and looked at the planning commission and sure enough, there was an old alley there that nobody knew about. In fact, there has been a home built there and the home's been tore down that probably was missed somewhere along the line. Modern technology caught up, finally caught up with us and it showed that alley there. It goes right down the middle of the alley and, or middle of the lot, runs north and south. And we're here to see if we could get that vacated to make it a buildable lot.
Any, any questions?
How long, how long have you owned the properties?
We've been there, mom, 10, 12 years at least.
I, my sister and I owned it together and then I've owned it for like 10 years.
Yeah.
Well, how long, I guess I'm going back to how long is, how long have you owned it?
How long? How have I personally?
Well, you and your sister.
Oh gosh, twenty years probably.
Twenty years ago, ran in there.
Okay, but it's not been an alley operating?
Oh no.
No.
No, no, it's, it's a yard.
It's a grass, but I have to have both.
We were all shocked when we saw this line going through it.
You have no one on the other side of it?
Uh, we own, the, it runs down the middle of the lot, so we own both sides of the alley.
Yeah, you can see it from there too.
Oh yeah, I got it. I got it, Charlie.
It's all yard, block, Perry Street.
I got it.
Yeah, I saw it.
Oh yeah, okay. Yeah, right down the middle.
Yeah, it splits, bang. Like I said, it was actually a house built there for years and years, right dead center over the alley, but, and since the house is tore down, I suppose 25 years ago before mother bought the place and...
I would entertain a motion to approve that. Do we close the hearing first and then we make a motion?
Well, you have to ask if there's any public comment.
Okay, yeah. You have any comments?
Did he do it all right?
Only ones when we fight ourselves, I guess.
Okay, well then I'll close the public meeting and ask for some action from the council.
Well, okay. There's, yeah, because you don't, we, Andy and I had this discussion while Harry was presenting, all of the ordinances for this evening, you can only have the first two readings, you can't...
Cause we don't have a full, full council.
You would need a fifth member to do it.
Okay. So do I have a motion to make the first reading of ordinance eight dash 2017? So move. And a second?
Yes.
Those in favor signify. Okay, two now. Marty, would you do the first reading please?
Ordinance number zero eight dash two zero one seven, ordinance vacating public ways, Rochester Township, Fulton County, Indiana. Whereas Frank C. Pickens, William Pickens, Andreas S. Ludwig have petitioned for the vacation of various public ways in Rochester Township, Fulton County, Indiana. Owners of real land within original and subsequent plots of the A.J. Holmes addition in the city of Rochester, more particularly described as follows. A ten-foot north-south alley lying between lot 506 and lot 507 and running the same length as lots 506 and 507 located in A.J. Holmes addition, a platted subdivision located in the city of Rochester, Fulton County, Indiana. Whereas a public notice of a public hearing was published in the Rochester Sentinel on the fourteenth day of September per state law and a public hearing was held on the twenty sixth day of September 2017 to allow interested parties to make their comments and concerns known. And whereas the Rochester Common Council duly considered the petition and proposed ordinance and determined that the ordinance should be adopted. Therefore be it ordained that a ten-foot north-south alley lying between lot 506 and lot 507 and running the same length as lots 506 and 507 located in A.J. Holmes addition, a platted subdivision located in the city of Rochester, Fulton County, Indiana. In Rochester, Indiana is, in Rochester, Indiana, is hereby declared vacated, subject to the rights of all public utilities currently existing and within said alley.
Any, any discussion? I would entertain a motion for the second reading by title only?
Your honor. Your honor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I said it with your honor, so he's doing that.
You're out of order.
I would propose a second reading, do we spend the rules and read it by title only?
Okay. You got the motion by Fitzwater, seconded by Karen. Those in favor? Okay.
Ordinance number zero eight dash two zero one seven, ordinance vacating public ways, Rochester Township, Fulton County, Indiana.
Okay. We'll have to wait for the third reading until we have more council members here.
Okay. Will I need to attend that meeting also, or will we have a representative here?
We can let you know once, cause what, once they, if they approve it at the next meeting, then I'll have to, you know, get the information over to Casey Cole's office.
Okay.
So we'll, you'll be notified if you're not available to attend.
Okay. We can, I mean, one or somebody can.
That's up to you.
If it's not necessary, one. Okay.
Well, good seeing you.
Nice seeing you too. Nice seeing you too. Yeah, you bet, Marty. Thank you.
Chief, you're up. Chief Butler, you're up for sure. Sure.
Sorry about that.
For now.
You're welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Report's for August, structure fires one in the city, calls for smoke, I'm sorry, structure fires one in Rochester Township, calls for smoke one in the city, landfill fire Newcastle Township, vehicle fire Rochester Township, auto fire alarms two in the city, stove fire one in the city, brush field fires one in Rochester Township, mutual aid three to Henry Township, accidents two in the city, four in Rochester Township, one in Richland Township, had a plane crash in the city, medical assist sixteen in the city, eight in Rochester Township, four in Newcastle Township, four in Richland Township, we had a CO check in the city, service calls three, had a total of fifty-seven runs and one drill. Also like to report all the trucks in the department have been serviced mechanically, all the pumps have been serviced, aerial has been tested and certified and at the end of the month or the end of the next two weeks, all pumps will be tested and certified, so a hundred percent, everything passed, good to go on apparatus. Pending your questions, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thanks.
Chief, you wanna, you wanna mention, give a plug to the bicycle at this time?
Sure. October eighth, so Sunday, we're gonna have a bicycle ride. We've been collecting some sponsors, we do this to fund the smoke detector program. We're involved with the Red Cross, actually, next month's drill will be going around Man at the Heights, door-to-door checking, kicking off Fire Prevention Month, kicking off that, going door-to-door, asking people if our smoke detectors are working, if we can come in and help check, if they need to be updated, we'll do that at no cost for the residents. And this is through the Red Cross and the funds that we, we receive from our bike ride. This is our third or fourth annual bike ride. We utilize a nickel plate trail and have a, have a pretty good day, so, it says coming up October eighth.
Questions?
Thanks, Chief. Thank you.
Good job. Okay, Chief Schatz is tied up with some police business tonight. Randy, given your report, Derek Holloway is tied up on some business also, so that brings us to...
Good evening, Lenny.
Out at the street department, we've been picking up bags of yard debris, chipping brush, picking up small piles of brush, cleaning catch basins, patching holes on various streets, leveled out millings in our lot to expand it for our leaves, been working on street signs, been running a recycling route, changed the downtown trash receptacles, getting ready to start a crew out next week on picking up the leaves in bulk. Been sweeping the streets on the west side and the east side of town. We're, I'm looking to, looking into purchasing a couple new sanders for our ton trucks. I got with WA Jones where we usually do our business and was trying to get a plastic ones like we had previously bought a couple years ago, they seem to hold up good, but they no longer make them. They make the stainless steel ones, which is actually cheaper than the plastic ones. Fifty-six hundred dollars for this eight-foot box stainless one installed and sixty-five hundred for the nine-foot three-foot box installed and hooked up and everything, so it'll be a bigger asset for us as some of my men don't have, and ladies don't have their CDL license and they could drive that truck without having, and it's just a lot easier to get into a lot of the tighter spots with that one ton than it is the bigger dump trucks. And that's about all I got for that, the street business.
Just one question there, Lenny, you'll be putting another map in the paper this year for the leaf pickup?
Yeah, yeah.
Similar to what we did last year, Wes?
Right now it's just hitting this, but when we get going, you know, full force, we'll start on the one side of town as what we choose and work our way accordingly. And it seemed to work out good last year, so we'll see how it goes. And, and park business, we've been, we got all the signs up, of course, and I got with the contractor and he's gonna be pouring the disc, disc golf pads Monday, starting Monday. Just been doing a lot of pressure washing underneath the pavilions, cleaning up the areas and we did a little bit of more painting on Man at the Mountain, just kind of brightening things up and maintaining what we have. That's about it.
Yeah, I think it bears mentioning, we had a park work meeting just before this meeting and a week ago, relative to the disc golf course, that's a, again, that's a pretty tight space out there and it's a shared space. We've got the Little League involved out there, we've got disc golfers, we've got anybody up there in the park area that, it's a shared area, so we wanted to make sure we had all of our problems worked out in kinks before setting anything in concrete, so to speak. So we met with the Little League last, about a week ago and discovered we, we in fact had, what was it, four holes.
Four holes that was questionable.
Questionable. And in discussing it with the Little League, they've got an area that they use out there for parking where we have two, two holes, plus they do some practicing with their kids when their diamonds aren't available and such. So we're, it was agreed that we would let the Little League put two of those holes out of play when they're using the area. And that way no cars will be in jeopardy nor any kids be in jeopardy of an issue. And a similar thing will be done with the basket that was at the bottom of the sledding hill, again, shared space, sledding's going on out there, that hole will be put out of play. So all in all, we're feeling pretty good about it now, aren't we?
Yeah, and, and doing that, we're just gonna basically redo the basket as far as, we're gonna pull it up and put a sleeve down in the ground and a pin, that way when you get ready to pull it up, you just pull it out, put this, pull the pin, pull the, pull the basket out, whole basket out and then put a cap over the existing pipe itself. That way there's no question of anybody playing there.
And, and for, you know, we won't have to be the ones making the decision, we're leaving that to the Little League. And a signage will stay as such, that when there's other activities going on there, those two holes will be out of play. And, and he said, you know, it's not a case where we would have something out of play for a week, it's more like a night, a day, so they can be in charge of pulling it and putting it back. And Dave Clark said they would be more happy to do that.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Yeah, a couple things with Lenny for yours, so the striping was done on Main Street on Sunday?
Yeah.
It looks good. Not everyone would even notice it was done, it hadn't been done.
We still got a couple spots to, some handicap stuff to put down and a couple lines to put up in front of Webb's, but that's gonna be a while, but we got a little bit of erasing to do that got a little commo, little commotion or somebody kind of dropped the ball on something, but he's gonna make it right with us and get it taken care of, so, still got a little bit of curb work to do, painting wise, but yeah, it looks a lot better.
The curb work he's talking about, that will be the finishing stages of the ninth to Main Street Park. There will be no parking, it'll be similar to across the street at the courthouse, there'll be no parking there at Main Street wrapped around Ninth Street all the way down Ninth, so there'll be no parking, right there in front of the park on Main and no parking on the side of the park down Ninth Street. That'll be left over.
And the last question I have is sort of tied into what Harry Webb was in, are there, you say it would be nice if all the benches in the whole city were all, all the Are there benches in the parks other than, I think they have made?
There are wooden benches.
Okay.
Yes.
How do, do we make those or buy those, if you know?
We thought them, or we've made them, we just get the material and that's what a guy that works full-time out there does in the winter, is he builds the picnic tables as such in the benches.
Okay.
Now, are you talking about the city park or the ninth to Main Street?
No, no, the city parks.
City park, okay.
I'm trying, if we were tying everything together, make everything look the same, I thought I was wondering what they have at the city parks. But they're just, I could go look. Wood benches, wood picnic tables.
Okay, yeah.
Any other questions for Lenny? Thank you, sir, good work.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along, area planning commission, Karen?
Oh, yes.
Late hours, right?
The area planning commission hasn't met twice since our last meeting, we met on August the 28th, which was the evening after our last meeting, and then again on Monday, September, September the 25th, which was last meeting. The, after the normal old business and the rest of the agenda, our evening was to go over the ordinances that had been previously written by, by the commissioners to foresee the possibility of wind energy conversation, or conversion, excuse me, system in Fulton County that had been made many years ago. So we went through each one of those ordinances, of which there were thirty-seven, and proposed what we thought might be a help or a hindrance. We had a large, a large crowd that evening and we had lots of, lots of interest and so the meeting went long as people discussed each one of these items. I'll just briefly read this so you have an idea of what was, or what, what it entails. The purpose of, of the wind energy system would be to facilitate the provision of wind energy conversion systems to the residents and businesses of Fulton County, excuse me. Minimize at first visual effects of WEX, which is the wind energy conversion facilities through careful design and citing standards. Encourage the location of WEX in non-residential areas through performance standards and incentives. Avoid potential damage and, to, and, damage to adjacent properties from WEX failure through structural standards and setback requirements. As I said, there were thirty-seven of these ordinances and it applied to absolutely everything pertaining to the possibilities of Fulton County obtaining wind conversion. So we spent a lot of time on that, came to what we thought was possibly a resolve, but tapered it at the end for further discussion at our September meeting, which was last evening. So we basically went through all thirty-seven again and pretty much came up to, with what we had the first evening. Once again, we had lots of, lots of input from the, from county residents and at this point, we're almost ready to happily submit what we might make to the changes in the 1991 formation of the wind energy conver- conversion system, I'm sorry. system, I'm sorry. Um, so that's where we are with that and that pretty much took our whole evening, a long one.
Uh, any, any idea of when this will all culminate into, uh...
At this point in time, after we make our recommendation to the commissioners, they look at, at the ordinances that we have changed and what changes we've made, they either can say yay or nay to what we have submitted. If they agree with what we have, then they will approve those ordinance. If not, they'll come back to the Area Planning Commission once again and we'll have to go through them again. But it's a start.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Goodman, uh, not here, of course, Fedco group did meet, uh, there was some, uh, general discussions about, uh, the completion of the Ninth and Main Street park. There was discussions about, uh, the opportunities that we've, we've been negotiating with, with our people from Peoria, both, uh, Mr. Bowley and others, uh, and that pretty much consumed most of the meeting time. Things are moving forward. Okay. The Hart Board, Mason's not here, I just gave you a little update on the Hart Board, Redevelopment Commission, Derek's not here. The BZA and Council on Aging, Marty, you're up.
I'm not used to going this quick. Does that mean I get like the time of four or five different ones?
It sounds like Sarah's ready to go. She might have to go first.
Tick tock, tick tock.
Yeah, okay. Well, I'll do the Council on Aging first, uh, we met yesterday. Transpo has hired, uh, three new drivers. One is now driving, has been for a couple of weeks, another one in training as we speak. And, um, just a, a little tidbit for you, twenty-five percent of the trips that Transpo takes are taking people to and from work, which I thought was...
Really?
Yes, twenty-five percent. Uh, so trip numbers are down just a little bit, uh, now for the year, but the revenue is up a little bit over a hundred dollars and that is the result of the rate change. Don't have anything to contribute, uh, or to attribute the lower rides, other than maybe the weather, I don't know, but they didn't really have a handle on that. Uh, from a RSDP standpoint, they had a, they were on their trip to Cape Cod when the storm hit the northeast and they had to turn around and come back. So that trip has been rescheduled for sometime in October. Not sure, uh, when that date is, but, uh, they're, they're, they are going back. And the other thing that I would mention, we've had a couple of extra meetings this month because, uh, there is a committee of us that are redoing the Personnel Policy Handbook. And, uh, we had our last meeting with the revisions. We are going to be getting, uh, that submitted to Andy for review and, uh, he doesn't know that yet, probably.
There's your now.
And, uh, and so we are redoing and looking at the handbook. Uh, Zoning, BZA meets tomorrow night. Uh, an interesting schedule, uh, there are four items on the agenda. Uh, one is for, uh, just steps out of deck, out at the lake. One is for, uh, new house being built out at the lake. Uh, one for a freestanding sign that they want to make a little bit bigger than what is normally allowed. And the fourth one is the pilot, uh, again, is coming because, uh, they want to build their billboard a little bit bigger and a little bit higher, well, twenty feet higher, I mean, quite a bit higher, uh, than the ordinance allows, but they've done a site testing coming from both ways on thirty-one and they've determined that it needs to be a little bit bigger from, from that standpoint, so.
Be sure they get a locate for the gas line.
Please.
Make sure NISCO knows where they're putting the stuff.
I was gonna say, they did.
They did, they did. Yes, they did. It wasn't their fault.
Right, no.
Yeah.
Uh, that concludes my report unless there are questions.
Your next question, Marty, is do you recall where Sally's By the Shore ended up with their, um, request for temporary, because they were supposed to be building a building and all of that? Where did that all end up?
That, uh, ended with a five-year continuance.
So they did get a ticket for five more years on top of their three, so a total of eight. Five additional years?
I'm sorry?
Five additional years or two more?
Five additional.
For where they're at right now, is that what you're...
Yeah, you see currently, right now, the way they're situated, the, um, tax revenue is not...
There, there is no tax revenue.
Correct, because there's not a, a permanent structure there. It's a trailer.
Anything else for Marty? Thanks, Marty. Um, Solid Waste Animal Adoption Center, Chase. Chase, you down there?
I'm here now. Uh, the one, uh, main thing I wanted to point out with the animal shelter, um, we're having an open house on October eighth from one to four P M for the new building that we put up.
Oh, that's October the eighth, you say?
October eighth, yep, uh, one to four.
Okay.
And, um, we ended up getting our kennels, uh, big cats and dogs and stuff, new kennels and stuff came in maybe two weeks ago and we're gonna have someone put that together and have our open house. And then for the solid waste, the recycling center shipped a hundred, one hundred and two point four tons of recyclables with a value of nine thousand six hundred forty-three point eight zero. Um, for the month of July twenty-seventeen, County Line Mansfield received thirty-three thousand six hundred twenty-two point one six tons of waste in twenty working days for a daily average of one thousand six hundred eighty-one tons per day. Fulton County accounted for four thousand thirty-four tons. The rest of Indiana contributed twenty-nine thousand five hundred eighty-four tons. There was three point two five tons of out-of-state trash collected. And the district host fee for the month was forty-five thousand three hundred ninety-one dollars and sixty-nine cents. The county host fee for the month of July was fourteen thousand seven hundred ninety-three dollars and eighty-two cents. So far, we've sold a total of two thousand one hundred and five orange bags, of which one thousand and twelve were purchased by city residents and one thousand one hundred forty-three were purchased by county residents. We've collected one thousand five hundred eighty-six dollars for disposal of bulk items. Um, I don't know if I mentioned this last meeting or not, but the tractor, ended up selling the tractor to a farmer in North Carolina for twenty-two thousand.
Oh, my gosh. North Carolina, huh?
Yeah. He came up and got that, uh, on August fourth, actually. And the last thing would be, uh, received a quote from the Highway Department to asphalt a back parking lot, um, where they have sewn. The quote includes the Highway Department providing labor and equipment to do the job. We would be getting asphalt at the Highway Department's cost. We would need approximately two hundred thirty-four tons, that's sixty-seven dollars per ton, which would be approximately fifteen thousand six hundred seventy-two dollars. Um, if approved, they'd be able to get that started in about a week or two, which, um, the solid waste did end up approving that.
Um, the Animal Adoption Center, how did, uh, the circus downtown go?
You know, it was okay for the first year, I guess. I mean, I think that they, I don't know, really nothing to expect because they weren't sure, so it was, it was okay, I guess.
They had some adoptions, did they?
They had a few.
Good adoption, yeah. Okay. Any questions for Chase?
No, but I would say follow-up, there were a lot of people downtown that day with combination of the farmer's market and the pet parade and all that, a lot more things going on downtown than there normally is on a Saturday morning. It was nice to see. So however often they do it, but, yeah, pretty more interested in their, getting coming down.
Okay. Um, Treeboard and EMS, Brad?
Treeboard, met a couple of times this month. The first one was on September seventh. Uh, one of the topics was the, the financials, uh, end of the years, uh, how much money is still left for whatever trees need to come down, be removed or trimmed, and also whatever trees we need to plant, uh, while we still can in the next few, next month or so. Uh, so we communicated with Shada, got the information and so tried, certainly tried not to go over budget, but also need to think about emergency damage and things like that and working with Lenny with all the, you know, the emergency things. There was some discussion about, uh, trees in the tree lawn at the, the new Ninth and Main Park. Uh, initially they weren't gonna put trees there, then they were talking about putting trees, but the mayor talked with the, uh, the people involved with that. Whatever they're doing, they're, they're doing that prior to it coming to the city. If there are trees going in there, it won't be coming out of the city's budget, so.
Yeah, T B D, T B D.
Okay, yeah. Also to discuss the planting of new trees, where they need to go to replace some of the ones that have come out, so they're still, and they're working with the, uh, the last batch of trees for rework and improving for this year. Uh, new ones are coming, now are probably going for next year because of the budget and everything else. And lastly, for that meeting, they talked more about the, uh, the Tree City application as well as the, the mayor that came before the council tonight with the revision of the ord- uh, the revision. Uh, next meeting was on the twenty-first and it was more, for the most part, it was re-finalizing the, uh, that packet of information that Mr. Andrew talked to us tonight about. Uh, so.
Okay.
Now, basically it for those two. And then the EMS board will meet and next quarterly meeting will be October. About their report for that, if I can.
Any questions for, uh, Councilman Fitzwater? Okay, uh, Councilman Garrett's not here this evening, neither's Derek, so we'll just move on to the Downtown Partnership, Sarah Reese. Boy, you think we were ever gonna get there, didn't you?
The good news is most of my stuff's already been covered, so I'll be quick. Um, I am Sarah Reese, Executive Director for the Rochester Downtown Partnership. Um, as you mentioned, we're excited to see the progress at Webb's. Um, they were one of two Rochester recipients of some grant funds through the OAKR office through what used to be the historical tax credit. Um, so we're excited to see that continue. Uh, work on the back wall of the former Bailey's Building is set to begin October second. Um, so once that back wall is repaired and restored, they will be able to start work on the roof. Um, the group that is taking over that property, has purchased that property and then the brewing group, um, are pretty determined to ensure that both the wall and the roof are repaired before winter sets in. They don't want to endure another, um, winter of damage to the interior of the building because of the issues with the wall and the roof. So we're hopeful that that will continue. Um, a little food for thought with your CEDIT conversation, um, there was a request for ten thousand dollars from CEDIT funds for that project that was made by Terry Lee. That request was denied. Um, they were told that the funds are not there, um, to support that project, so for what it's worth, you know, that's food for thought. Uh, we have our monthly board meeting, um, tomorrow afternoon and I anticipate us approving four projects in our focus area that will total about thirteen thousand dollars in facade grant funds, um, which is about twenty-six thousand dollars of private investment in, on top of that thirteen thousand that we would be awarding, so, um, nice chunk of change going into downtown Rochester improvements, so we're excited for that. Uh, we have started our strategic planning sessions for twenty eighteen. We are once again working with Stephen Ray of the North Central Indiana Regional Planning Commission to develop our strategic plan for twenty eighteen, so, um, I'm sure that the invitation will be extended to Mayor Denton as well as any council members that would care to participate in that to keep lines of communication open. Um, we do have a couple of grants that we're looking to apply for that we're kind of investigating. Harry mentioned one of them and that's the facade renovation program that's funded through the Office of Community and Rural Affairs. That's a potential for about five hundred thousand dollars, um, as he mentioned, for ten to fifteen specific projects. We're also intending to apply for the Downtown Enhancement Grant. Um, right now we are looking to determine, the grant cycle is open now. Um, those applications have to be in by November. I'm not specific on the date at the moment, but, um, funds would be distributed in twenty eighteen if we apply for that grant cycle. Um, they in the past have done more than one grant cycle per year, but it's not a guarantee. So if we don't pursue it this grant cycle, we could potentially be looking at the end of twenty eighteen before we would be, we would be applying for that grant. And those funds are going to be used for the wayfinding and gateway signage for the city. So, um, I am working with Harry Webb, who is our Design Chair, and then also John Little, who has been involved in that whole process of signage for quite some time, um, to kind of determine what we feel like our best course of action is of when we apply for that. Uh, the group of MBA students from IU Kokomo that has been working on the leakage analysis has primarily finished their report. There are some minor tweaks that need to be done. Um, we anticipate them giving their presentation at the next Fedco meeting. Um, that was the audience that was determined that they would be presenting to, um, but we're just waiting on a confirmation that they will be presenting that there. And that will help to guide our, um, business traction efforts, knowing more detail of where we're leaking money to other communities, so we're excited for that input. Um, as far as events, Shada mentioned, we are planning to have Booth Fest once again this year. That will be on October thirty-first from four-thirty to five-thirty for our downtown businesses. Um, I am hoping to have a contest, a costume contest this year. As Shada gracefully said, we are having some transition, meaning that my Promotions Chair has resigned her position, so, um, I'm hopeful, but I am only one person, so, uh, we'll see how that plays out. We're also working out the final details of our Santa Parade and Breakfast with Santa to, so those dates are still to be determined. And lastly, we have three board seats to fill, so, um, two of them will be, um, opening at the end of the year just because of, um, terms expiring, um, and then the third for to, to replace the Promotions Chair. So if you know of anyone who has an interest in downtown, please send them my way. That's all I have for your questions.
Yeah, the paper report. I'd like to mention very quickly for the council's benefits, since, uh, you went through the Van Dyne situation and the Bailey Building process, there is, there is right, there was a request made, uh, by Terry for some CEDIT funds and it was turned down, uh, a couple other avenues he's going to pursue for that, those monies, but, uh, that whole experience, uh, brought us to a, a meeting a week ago of the, uh, many folks from the Downtown Partnership, the Redevelopment Commission, Fedco, the Chamber and, you know, most from the city. And in the meeting, we discussed the fact that, uh, when we have somebody who shows interest in Rochester, it'd be nice to have something, a packet of some kind, a handout from the city, whatever, from, from all these groups, uh, starting out with a cover letter from the city and then a page, a one-page explanation of each of the groups and the things, the incentives that could be available from each group and process that, you know, just a short, not, not war and peace, something that points out how you go about approaching some of these incentives if you're interested in investing in our downtown. And then it ends with a final page saying, "For further information, please contact this liaison person," the name, telephone number, and, uh, email address. That way we, we pull it all together and not only do all the groups have a packet they can look at and see what everybody's doing, but you got an individual interested in, uh, spending their money in Rochester, investing, they know who to go to, they don't have twelve... their money in Rochester, investing, they know who to go to, they don't have twelve people to talk to. That liaison person becomes their ombudsman throughout the process and takes them from cradle to grave. We thought there was a lot of value to that. The assignment was that everybody was to go back and by the sprite, you have a one-pager back to us here, and then we'd have another meeting and refine it a bit and get it in format like that. I had shared with him that I'd got an interesting call from Mayor Denny Spinner in Huntingburg. He had read one of the ED publications about the Van Dyne mission with Argus and now with Rochester, and saw some of the things that were involved with Rochester. He called to say, how do you pull all that together? You know, Huntingburg's about the same size as Rochester, and we run up against the, so I told him, and I said, well, we're still working through that, and we're new at this. This is the process we're gonna take. He says, you get that put together, send it to me. So, you know, it's a, it's a situation that we're not alone. There are people still pulling things like that together, so we're gonna bring it better now. It'll be easier for somebody like a Van Dyne to come in and see what's available.
Good idea.
Thank you, Sarah. Any, anything else for Sarah, anybody? Thank you very much. Nice job. Okay, just a couple of things before we get to the resolutions. Derek wasn't here tonight to give his report. One of the things he was gonna mention, he is going to the Leadership Academy now. Andy just finished his last year of Leadership Academy, and she shouts. Derek is the attendee from the city this year. The other thing is, the first of the month, we had the interaction management super budget training for all of our superintendents and our two chiefs, and Shada went through it also, on having discussions with your subordinates, how to document our disciplinary process, stats.
They're for moral support.
You were just there to chide from the back, yeah, yeah. Anyway, going through, you know, here's, if you need to have a discussion with somebody about an issue, here's how to, here's what's expected of the result as far as documentation, and follow-up, follow-up, follow-up. Just give them some tools, folks, some tools that we have, we have had, we have seen this at this level. It's something to do in industry. We haven't done this valley before, and I think the folks got some value out of it.
Don't forget first aid.
Okay, yes, we also had first aid training this, this month also, and now everybody, except the mayor, knows how CPR. I'm gonna stay close to somebody who knows CPR, you know? But everybody's trained now.
We sent everybody through, everybody received from the American Heart Association first aid and CPR training, so all of the, except for the golf. We're actually gonna do another training with them in December, obviously because of the season.
Put them down.
Yeah, and Mayor Denton will be involved in that one as well, because he, at the last minute, said, oh, I can't change my appointment, and so because he's the mayor, we were nice, and he made an adjustment, and we're gonna send you to the golf course.
Okay. All right, let's, let's take a look at Ordinance five dash twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, regarding twenty-eighteen budget. I would entertain a motion to read that ordinance.
Can these be read by title only?
Yeah, well, how long is it? I didn't look at it. Can we do it by title only?
It's a couple pages big.
So unanimous, you can do all three of them by, or two of them by title only.
Two of them by title only.
Yep.
So then the third one we retain for reading in its entirety, but that's would be-
No, you could do all three by title only, I just mean you can't, because you can't do it.
That's right, we can't do the third, right, so. So the answer is yes, we can do them by title only.
Yes.
Okay, I would entertain a motion then to read five dash twenty-seventeen by title only for the first reading.
So moved.
On the second. Moved by Fitzwater, seconded by Thompson, those in favor, raise your right hand. Four zero. Marty, could you read the ordinance, please?
Yes. Ordinance of resolution for appropriations and tax rates.
Okay. Any discussion? I would entertain then a motion to have the second reading by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Smith, seconded by Fitzwater. Those in favor? Unanimous? Okay, would you please read, have the second reading by title only?
Yes, and I apologize the first time. Ordinance number oh five dash two oh one seven, ordinance of, or resolution for appropriations and tax rates.
Okay. We'll have to save the third reading for our next meeting. Moving on then to Ordinance six dash twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen salary. I would entertain a motion to have the first reading by title only.
So moved.
Moved by Fitzwater, seconded by Karen. Those in favor, signify. It's four zero. Okay, Marty, if you would, by title only, six dash twenty-seventeen.
Ordinance number zero six dash twenty-seventeen, and ordinance fixing the salaries for the employees of the City of Rochester, Indiana for the year twenty eighteen.
Okay, any discussion? I would entertain a motion for the second reading of zero six dash twenty-seventeen by title only.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Thompson, seconded by Fitzwater. Those in favor, signify. Four zero. Marty, you're on there, partner.
Ordinance number zero six dash twenty-seventeen, and ordinance fixing the salaries for the employees of the City of Rochester, Indiana for the year twenty eighteen.
Okay, moving along to Ordinance seven dash twenty-seventeen. I'd entertain a motion to read that ordinance for the first time by title only. Karen made the motion, seconded.
So moved.
Marty seconded. Okay, this is zero seven twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen elected officials.
Can I vote for the motion?
Yes, I need a vote for the motion, yes, four zero. Twenty, seven dash twenty-seventeen by title only, please, first.
Ordinance zero seven dash twenty-seventeen, and ordinance fixing the salaries of all elected officials of the City of Rochester, Indiana payable for twenty eighteen is approved by IC three six dash four dash seven dash two.
Any discussion? I would entertain a motion for the second reading of zero seven dash twenty seventeen.
Second.
Moved by Thompson, seconded by Fitzwater. Those in favor, four zero. Marty, please, the second reading.
Ordinance zero seven dash twenty-seventeen, and ordinance fixing the salaries of all elected officials of the City of Rochester, Indiana payable for twenty eighteen, as approved by IC three six dash four dash seven dash two.
Okay. That leaves us with a resolution.
Which you can pass tonight.
Yes, we can handle that tonight. That's, that needs one reading. Resolution zero nine dash twenty seventeen, petty cash modification. I'd entertain a motion for the reading of that resolution.
So moved.
Marty, moved, Karen seconded. Those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Four zero. Would you please read Resolution zero nine twenty seventeen, petty cash modification, Marty?
Resolution zero nine dash twenty seventeen, a resolution to increase the petty cash amounts, whereas the City of Rochester desires to increase the petty cash amounts as expenses such as certified mailings and recording fees have increased and sometimes fall outside regular claims cycle, whereas the following petty cash increases are necessary to accommodate increased expenses. Police Department from twenty dollars to a hundred dollars, clerk treasurer's office from twenty dollars to a hundred dollars, water department from fifty dollars to a hundred dollars, wastewater department from fifty dollars to a hundred dollars. All petty cash money is retained and dispersed as the clerk treasurer's, at the clerk treasurer's office, except the police department, whereas the increased petty cash amounts will be transferred from operating cash accounts to petty cash accounts. Now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the City of Rochester, Indiana, that petty cash amounts be increased and transferred as itemized above.
Any discussion on Resolution zero nine dash twenty seventeen?
Move to pass.
Marty made the motion to pass, seconded by Thompson. Those in favor, signify by raising your right hand, and it is four zero. Thank you very much.
No, thank you.
Yeah.
It's amazing how low we can operate. How low we can be on twenty bucks.
With no, no further business on the agenda, I'd like to thank you all for hanging in for the long meeting tonight, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Fitzwater moved, Thompson seconded. Those in favor, it's four zero. Thank you.
Four two zero.